Hi, everybody. Welcome. We're just letting some people filter in here. We'll get started in a minute. Okay. Okay. Hi, everybody, and welcome to the Invasive Species Center's webinar series. My name is Madison. I'm the Tracheal Invasives Team Lead at the Invasive Species Center. I'll be your moderator for today's webinar, but we'll learn all about controlling invasive buckthorn. Before we begin, I wanted to note that the Invasive Species Center respectfully acknowledges that our head office is located on the traditional lands of the Inishnaabek, the Bajwana, and Garden River First Nations, as well as a longtime settlement of the Métis People and the Robinson-Heron Treaty area. We are meeting virtually today, so I just wanted to acknowledge that the Indigenous peoples are the traditional stewards of the lands and waters where each of us attended the webinar this afternoon. In case you aren't familiar with us, the Invasive Species Center is a not-for-profit organization that mobilizes action against invasive species that harm the environment, economy, and society. We're based in Sault Ste. Rayo, Ontario, that we do have staff kind of scattered all throughout the province. We've got lots of great free invasive species resources for you to check out on our website, including species profiles, best management practices, and recorded webinars like the one we're doing today. You can also sign up on our homepage for our newsletter, bi-weekly media scan, Forest Pest Newsletter, and event invitations. The last thing I'll mention about us, rather quickly, is our invasive species training program. It's a virtual self-paced program that offers courses for anyone wanting to learn more about the impacts of invasive species in the community or workplace. We currently have five courses available with a few already in development. We actually have two planned to be released in December, so you can just sign up on our website to receive updates on any other future courses. This webinar is supported by the Green Belt Foundation. The Green Belt Foundation is dedicated to promoting and sustaining the Green Belt as a vital, valuable, and permanent safeguard for our future that enhances the quality of life for all residents of Ontario. They do work to protect and enhance Ontario's Green Belt through education, research, grant-making, and partnerships. A lot of our agricultural work right now at the IAC has made possible thanks to them, so big thank you to Green Belt. With that, it's my absolute pleasure to introduce our speaker, Mike Schuster. Mike Schuster is a researcher in the Minnesota Invasive Tracheal Plants and Pest Center at the University of Minnesota, and he's an assistant professor at Hamlin University. His research focuses on the process of exotic plant invasions, their consequences for ecosystem functioning, and methods of biodiversity management. Since 2016, Mike has led the Cover It Up project, which evaluates novel revegetation approaches to forest understorys intended to increase biotic resistance and reduce invasions of buckthorn and other exotic woody species. So, thank you so much for being here, Mike. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. It took me a second to get back on, but yeah, thanks for having me.
No worries. Maybe while you're sharing your screen, I'll just go over a couple housekeeping notes here. If you have questions for Mike at any point throughout his talk, please feel free to pop them in the Q and A box, and I'll read them at the very end of the presentation. We also have a little survey to fill out at the very end, and that'll help us create future webinars, so all of your feedback is really appreciated. Awesome. I can see your screen, Mike. Thank you so much. You ready? Ready to go?
Awesome. Yeah, great. So, today I'm going to talk about some of the work that I've done over the past nine years, looking at how to fortify forests against invasive species like buckthorn, and taking a special moment to, to kind of point out some of the community connections that we have there in terms of partners, and the way that some of this work can be used by volunteer groups or community organizations to effectively manage forests around them. There we go. So, most of the work that I'm going to be talking about is covered under our project called Cover It Up. And a lot of that, a lot of resources on that project, including things like seed mixes, descriptions of experiments, partner links, that sort of thing, is all on our website, coveritup.uven.edu. So, if you are curious about that, or we recently put out a guide for understory revegetation, if you want to see that document, that's all available on our website. And then, of course, none of this work would have been possible without an extensive network of partners. This work is done here in Minnesota and the US with a bunch of different types of organizations, including nonprofits, government, tribal, and community resources. And so, I wanted to just pop this up here as a nod to them, but also just to kind of illustrate the complexity of these issues and how many people really are not only invested in it, but also have a, you know, have a role in, in making effective change in the world around us. And so, I'm mostly focusing on buckthorn here. There's two different types of buckthorn. There's common buckthorn that's invasive in North America, that's Ramnos cathardica, and then glossy buckthorn is Frangula alnus. And both of these species are present in my research areas, and they're also present widely in the Green Belt region as well. So, even though we're going to be talking about largely common buckthorn, a lot of the same trends can be used in glossy buckthorn context as well. And the thing about these species is that they were originally introduced in the mid-1800s as an ornamental hedge plant. So, they have a bunch of traits that make them really good at this job, including they grow really quickly, they produce very dense foliage, they hold their leaves late into winter, which is a really important component of this story. They produce tons of fruit, and they're extremely tolerant of deer browse and pruning. So, all these things you can imagine are fantastic for a hedge, but as soon as those species escape into natural areas, we have a problem. Those traits allow them to pretty much, you know, dominate these systems and push out native species that would otherwise be there. And so, these traits not only set the groundwork for them to be successful invasive species, but also affects the way that we want to manage them, or ways that we can effectively manage them. And if we look at the Green Belt as a whole, you know, there's many different types of, of systems. Within the Green Belt is not a homogeneous thing, but no matter where you are in the Green Belt, buckthorn can present certain challenges and have a particular impact in those systems. Those impacts are far-reaching and diverse. You know, it includes things like, well, maybe more, more intuitive, things like exclusion of native plants, but also longer-term problems like arrested forest succession. We're not seeing, you know, little trees grow up into big trees, for example. We don't see effective timber production in these systems either. We don't see effective habitat for many different types of wildlife. We see altered nutrient and fire dynamics. We see changes in erosion and water quality as a result of that. We also see some interesting biological interactions with buckthorn with other species, like earthworms. Earthworms aren't native to this part of the world, and buckthorn promotes earthworms, earthworms promote buckthorn, and it's just kind of this, this vigorous cycle of invasion that we see play out. We also see buckthorn acting as hosts for several agricultural pests, things like soybean aphid or oak crown rust. And we also see buckthorn reducing the recreational or cultural value of woodlands around us. There's not much that you can do in a system that's invaded by buckthorn. Like, you can crawl through it. That's a good thing to do. And so, many people try to manage buckthorn in some shape or form. Some things to keep, well, some things to keep in mind with this is that there isn't a perfect approach. No matter what you do, it's not going to be perfect. All the different ways that we go about managing buckthorn have different strengths and weaknesses. They all have limitations, and often the best approach is going to be a multifaceted one, one where we utilize multiple different strategies at once to achieve the best outcome possible. And when we do that, we want to make sure that we set realistic expectations and goals. Be honest with ourselves about what we can realistically invest in and what we can do, because it's much better to manage a small area well than a large area poorly. Oftentimes, you know, biting off more than we can chew, so to say, leaves us in a worse place than when we started even. So, be realistic. Take little bites. It's okay. Now, when we actually get to doing the management, there's lots of different tools and approaches that we can use. We can uproot the plants. It's really the only guaranteed way to kill a buckthorn of these options, because once it's out of the ground, it's, it's not going to survive. But aside from that, which is extremely labor-intensive, we have things like, you know, cutting, cutting the top part of the trees off, maybe applying herbicide, you know, the kind of cut-and-treat option. We have more industrial versions of this, where we use forestry mowers or mulching heads on tractors or skid steers, that sort of thing. All these are forms of, you know, mechanical, physical removal of the plant. And they're often paired with other types of management as well. In more open systems, grasslands, savannas, maybe we're able to use fire. That's not the case in a lot of woodland or forest systems, because there's not enough fuel. But in these more open contexts, sometimes that is possible. There's increasing interest in using livestock like goats to manage buckthorn. And then, the most robust of these is probably using herbicides in, in many different forms, often like a foliar application, or basal bark application, or a cut-stem application. And so, there's lots of different ways that we can do this. One thing that I want to bring to your attention, though, is a more novel approach that we're looking at right now. And that's this idea of critical period cutting. And critical period cutting essentially aims to starve the plant of carbon and stress the plant by continually removing its leaves and green tissues. So, the way this works is that in June of each year, we go out and high-top a plant. So, I mean, it's cutting it off at like the waist or at chest height level, and then going back over the course of the next summer, two summers, and just stripping off all the regrowth that occurs. So, if you look at the picture on the right here, you can see one of the stems that we've done this to, where we've cut it off at, at chest height, and then it has all these respouts, all these green, green tissues that come off. If we can just pull those off, we can gradually starve, starve the plant. And this is an ongoing line of research. We have a collaboration across several different states here in the US, looking at different, different buckthorns, glossy buckthorn, common buckthorn, and different contexts, different, different environmental, different environmental conditions, and how they affect the efficacy of this treatment. But so far, in Minnesota, our preliminary data suggests that we're having pretty good results with this, that, you know, about three, four sub-plants that we treat in this way are dead before the end of the second season, which is much better than I had anticipated, and, and a, a pretty decent thing without using any type of herbicide. And so, this is a low disturbance, non-chemical option that might be ideal for volunteer groups, for example, right? This is something that folks can go out into their, their local parks, or in their backyards, wherever they're trying to affect change, and do this with little to no training or special equipment, right? Like, once we do the initial cut, you really just need a hand pruner or, or gloved hand is sufficient in a lot of cases just to pull, pull these off. And so, this is another way that we may be able to manage buckthorn in a non-chemical and low disturbance way. The basis for this is, is something like this, where basically in a normal setting, normal setting, plants go through this kind of energetic cycle, where they're photosynthesizing to get carbon and sugars, and those carbon inputs are at least equal to, if not greater than, the carbon outputs that they have, like things like growing and maintaining their, their biomass. And that happens because, you know, coming out of winter, plants have some stored reserves. They have some carbon locked away. They mobilize that carbon to put out new growth, to put out leaves, and then they replenish that battery, that carbon battery, over the course of summer by photosynthesizing, by using their leaves. And then, when it comes time to fall, they have a full tank, and they can go through the winter and survive the winter, and then have some left over to put leaves out again the next season. But with critical period cutting, we flip the script. We make it so that carbon inputs are less than carbon outputs. So, we have that same setup, where coming out of winter, we have some stored reserves. The plant uses those to put out green tissues, but then we take those tissues away. We say, "Plant, you don't get to recharge your battery now," and so it's just a stem. And maybe it will, it will dig deep, it'll, you know, scrounge up a little bit more resources and push out some respouts, right? We saw that in the last picture, respouts. Those respouts, ideally for the plant, would recharge its battery and allow the process to continue, but we say, "Nope, not going to happen." You're gonna, we're gonna take that carbon away from you again. And so, it's left again with an empty tank. And if we just keep doing this, high-top it in June, strip off in September, strip off in the next June, strip off in September, most plants end up just not having enough gas in the tank and dying. And so, I mentioned this to you not, not just because it's a, a, a non-chemical, alternative way of dealing with plants, but also because it can be very useful when making prioritizations about the types of plants that we want to remove. Ultimately, our goal is to remove as many buckthorn as possible, right? Big buckthorn, small buckthorn, buckthorns of all shapes and sizes. But if we have limited resources, which we do, it may be useful to prioritize some of the biggest fruiting plants first. Now, buckthorn is diocious. It's, can be either male or female, and the female ones fruit. And so, we want to target the fruiting trees and get those out of there first. Like, that's kind of the, one of the, one of the priorities that we can set. I mean, take out those fruiting trees using maybe this critical period cutting method. And, and that's good, because most buckthorn seeds, almost all buckthorn seeds, if they're going to germinate, are going to germinate within two years. And so, once we remove those fruiting plants, we cut off the source of seeds in that area, and those plants will germinate relatively soon and be suppressed by their neighbors, the other buckthorn that are left. And we know this because of some earlier work that we did with light requirements of buckthorn. So, this is a graph showing three-year survival rates of buckthorn seedlings relative to canopy openness. In other words, how much light gets through the canopy. And in most buckthorn stands, we're at very low light availability, something like, you know, 2%, 3%, 4% light availability. And in that area, we have very low buckthorn survival. And so, by going through, removing those fruiting trees, and relying on the remaining stems to suppress the seeds, we can actually get, we can actually reduce the amount of buckthorn coming back and make our job a little bit easier. Once we do that, then we can focus on subsections to do some more intensive treatment, really get down and get the, get big buckthorn, get little buckthorn, get the whole, the whole suite of plants. Now, regardless of the method that we use, those removals are almost always incomplete. And we have respouts from damaged stems, like you can see on the right. We have small buckthorn that escaped treatment, right? Maybe that's by design, in the case that we're doing that, that size prioritization. Maybe we're leaving the buckthorn, the small buckthorn there. And then, of course, there's new buckthorn that show up from dispersal, from like birds, for example, or from the seeds that are left over from whatever removal that we just did. And that can result in a situation like you see on the lower right-hand image here, where there's just a carpet of buckthorn. And those situations are really challenging to deal with. And with those mechanisms in place, it probably isn't surprising that many stands require repeat treatment within just a few years. So, this is a site that was forestry mode, and within a couple of years, looked like this. Now, this is my research partner, Peter Rayg, and most of the green stuff around him is buckthorn. And now, he's a, is an average-height person, so like, that's a lot of regrowth, right? That's, you know, six feet of regrowth in just a couple of years, and it can be really hard to compete with that. And it can happen even faster than that. This is a picture of me holding a stem that respouted within a couple of months. So, this is a really large individual, so it's a mother of all buckthorn that we call them. So, it's really, really wide, mature trees. It had tons of carbon reserves that it could mobilize to do this, this regrowth. And so, even within a couple of months, it got to be six feet tall. And there's no way that new plants can compete with that, right? There's, there's just no way that they're ever going to be able to get taller, bigger, stronger than these super regrows. And so, these respouts can quickly redominate sites and continue the story of invasion and continue to exclude native species just because they have so much gas in their tank. And there's lots of ways that we can deal with this. One is herbicides. We've had really good success using an herbicide called Fosammonium, but a more traditional, like, industry standard is something like Triclopiol as a foliar spray. Or we can use things like critical period cutting and just keep on wearing down these plants over multiple seasons. Now, let's say that we have something in place to deal with these large stems, right? Whether it's critical period cutting or herbicides, right? We have something in place to deal with respouts. That still leaves that, that bank of small plants, the seedlings and saplings that are, are just haven't been dealt with yet. And these little buckthorn are really the, the bulk of the issue going into the future, right? They're the things that, that redominate the stand in, you know, years three, four, five, six, whatever. And the reason for this is because by doing our management, whatever it is, we're actually kind of setting the stage for the small plant's success. If you look at the image on the right here, you see on the left is an area that hasn't been managed for buckthorn, and on the right is an area where buckthorn's been removed by cut-and-treat. And you might not be surprised to know that this is a property line. It's a very common situation. It's on the left, the manager hasn't, the, the property owner hasn't managed. And these two scenarios represent very different light conditions and resource conditions in general, but especially light. If you think about the amount of light reaching the soil surface, again, it's like 2%, 3% on the left, and it's much higher on the right, something like 20%. And especially, this means that buckthorn gets more light in the fall on the right-hand side of that image. It moves us from that really low light condition to very high light condition. And in the fall, buckthorn is really recharging its batteries. That's when it's getting the most bang for its buck, because most native species have dropped their leaves. And so, buckthorn's the only one photosynthesizing, and it makes a huge surplus of carbon in that fall period. And by removing competition, we remove anything that would prevent those little buckthorn from, from achieving that goal of, of carbon in the fall. And so, the remaining and new buckthorn are able to exploit this surgeon resources, and there's very little native species left to compete against them. And so, they do great. They have a great time. Now, we can fix that. We can reverse that or mitigate it, at least in part, by re-establishing native plant species. And this has been the, the bulk of my work over the past decade, is looking at how native plant species can suppress invasion. And we've done it through a variety of different experience and a bunch of different contexts, using different methods. I gave a talk with the Invasive Species Center about a year ago that went into detail of one of these experiments, or a couple of these experiments in, in greater depth. So, if you're curious, check out that earlier video too. But the, the big take-home message is that re-establishing native plants lowers invasion. Species like wildry grasses, so Virginia, Canada silky wildry, are all very well-adapted for dealing with small woody species in woodland environments, especially ones that have more light availability. But in darker scenarios, or places where we want to have more focused impacts, we can use some shrubs, like red elderberry can be really effective at this as well. And so, these species, amongst others, can have reliable, but variable, impacts across diverse contexts. Some places are going to work better than others. In general, though, we see an average of 50% to 90% reduction in buckthorn invasion over several, over multiple-year windows, depending on the method and context. So, that's a meaningful reduction in the amount of invasion that we see by using these methods. We also get benefits of improved biodiversity and ecosystem function with these tools. So, by restoring native plant diversity, we improve pollinator habitat, especially for plants that provide floral resources to pollinators in seasons where they can't easily get them other places, like in grasslands. So, in particular, like, I'm really interested in rusty patch bumblebee, because that's an endangered species in my neck of the woods. We see a higher proportion of rusty patch bumblebee-preferred flowers in our revegetated areas, and we see higher floral quality in those areas as well. So, there's improved pollinator habitat, because we, we made it that way. We designed it that way in the seed mix, right? We also have other benefits, other add-on benefits, like stabilized nutrient cycling. We see lower decomposition rates, more stable nutrient cycling inside these restored areas compared to areas where we haven't done this type of revegetation work. And so, it's not just invasion reduction, it's, it's ecosystem restoration that we achieve through this. And in order for this to be successful, we really need to prioritize revegetation as part of the management approach. It's not an afterthought. It's something that we need to do alongside removal. And the reason for that is because most buckthorn seeds, 99%, so most might be underselling it, 99% of buckthorn seedlings show up within two years of dispersal. So, you know, a seed gets dropped from a tree or moved by a bird, within two years, that seed, if it's going to turn into a seedling, will be a seedling. And within that two-year window, most buckthorn removal areas have very low ambient cover. There's very low cover of, of herbaceous plants in those first couple of years in a lot of sites. And so, again, we set up the scenario where we have a lot of seeds showing up very quickly and nothing to compete against them. And that's also too bad, because these little buckthorn are most vulnerable in their first year of life, and by their third year of life, they're pretty robust. The chances of any one buckthorn seedling dying by year three, or in its third year, are very low, whereas the chances of any buckthorn dying in its first year are pretty high. And so, we have a scenario here where it's, it's kind of a race against a clock, where we're trying to get cover established as quickly as possible, so it can compete against this wave of buckthorn seedlings in the time that they are most abundant and also most likely to respond to that treatment. And so, we need to have dense cover of native species established in the summer following management in order for this method to really be as effective as it can be. And so, we do that in multiple different ways, for example, using winter seeding. In our herbaceous plant experience, experiments, we seed our grasses and forbs in the winter, and that has a couple of benefits. One is that it does this timing thing, but it also allows us to ensure adequate coverage if we see seed on top of snow, right? We can actually see where the seeds go and get better results that way, because we're getting seed where it needs to go. Or, you know, if you're using woody species or plugs, bare roots, that sort of thing, containerized plants, do it early in the spring, right, right after you do some management. And, and that can make sure that those plants are there and able to compete as soon as possible. Both of these are very good volunteer activities. So, in the lower picture there, you can see a crew of students that I led that went out and planted a bunch of trees for some of the experiments that we've done. That's something that can be done with very little training, very little equipment. Seed spreading is also something that can be done by, by community groups. This is a local nature This is uh a local nature center here, the Sally Menzare Nature Center does uh, does seeding activities with school groups, scouts, things like that. Um, and it works out, works out well. Now, you know, you have children doing this, this work. Um, it's, it's going to go a little bit differently, but still something that volunteer groups for people young and young at heart can do. And so let's say we're going to take this herbaceous approach. We're going to seed with grasses and wildflowers. This is a really practical and cost-effective approach because we can affect large areas for relatively cheap. Um, there are commercial mixes available for this type of work that are very uh grass-focused, again, using those wildry species especially. But you can also build your own mix, right? It's uh, you, you're free to tailor this as, as much as you want, but the really important thing is that we're using these wildry species. Um, they're adapted for these woodlands that have at least 10% canopy openness. So if you look up at the sky, you can see, or you're in the woods, you look up at the trees, you can see at least 10% open sky. That's where they're going to do best. That's where they're going to have the most influence. And um, they can grow really quickly in those scenarios and they leave a layer of thatch behind that shades those little buckthorn in the fall. You remember a few minutes ago, I mentioned that, that fall period is really important. Grass still competes against buckthorn in the fall because it shades it using that thatch. And most of the time when we're doing this, we're doing it at about 600 seeds per square meter or 60 seeds per square foot of, of wildry grasses. And we see that this works broadly, but in a way that is dependent on canopy conditions. So uh, these are two graphs showing you how herbaceous cover on the left and ground level light availability on the right responds to seeding based on canopy openness. Um, and on the left, you can see that yes, seeding in green creates more herbaceous cover than unseeded areas in black. But that, that is particularly true in those higher light conditions. And as you might expect, seeding has a consequent effect of reducing light levels greater in more open sites. Because you get thicker ground layer vegetation, you get thicker production of grasses in those more open sites. And so that brings light levels down lower and has an effect of reducing buckthorn proportionally. So we see the greatest impact of seeding in those high light environments. So if we have a, um, if we have a site that's about 20% canopy openness, uh, we see a reduction of buckthorn performance that's about 90%. Whereas if we're in a site that has about 7% openness, something that looks like this, that drops to about 60%. Still good, but not, not as good as 90%, right? Um, but still very good. Still very good. So we, we see site-specific responses, but we see a general effect of, of seeding. And that's been supported by our citizen science network, our participatory science network. Um, we had about a hundred people, a hundred different sites around the state of Minnesota that all uh sowed, sowed, seeded the same mix of species, um, including grasses, forbs, and even tree seeds as well in this particular experiment. And uh, they all had fully replicated experiments at each of their sites. And we looked at how um, how seeding affected buckthorn performance across the state, not just in the, the limited number of sites that we could personally manage, but a much larger variety of conditions. And um, those results supported our, our general results that we saw buckthorn did worse with seeding. Particularly in places where there was low ambient cover of grasses. In places where there was more grass cover ambiently, uh, then seeding wasn't as necessary. So then what's the deal with the wildflowers, right? If this is just a story about grasses, what do wildflowers bring to the table? Well, the thing about the grasses is that they're most effective in those first few years. And that's when we really need them, right? That's when there's the biggest demand for competition because of that wave of seedlings. But after about five years, the grasses tend to start to thin out. And that could leave the system vulnerable to invasion anew. But the wildflowers actually tend to take about that long to show up. So it's an, a pretty complementary system with seeding grasses and forbs at the same time that the grasses do the, the bulk of the buckthorn suppression early on, but the wildflowers can build resistance to invasion of buckthorn and other species over time. And so they can kind of build in a little bit more long-term resistance by having these wildflower components to a restoration approach. Uh, we're using species like white snake root, uh brown eyed blackhead susan, water leaf, bee bomb, figwort, columbine, meadow roo, and many more. Um, all of these are species that have shown up in our, that have been included in our seed mix and have shown up in at least some sites. Now this is an area where you get a lot more tailoring based on site, uh, where some species are going to do better in, in different conditions than others. Um, but, but you don't have to include them at the same rates as you do grasses because they're, they're, your goal here is a long more uh, a, a lot more long-term succession than just the kind of uh brute force approach of the grasses. We also see this being a, an interesting approach in the face of continued pressure from things like oak wilt and emerald ash borer. These are two forest pests and path, pests, pests or pathogens uh that are opening up the canopy in North America, right? And with a more open canopy, we see potential for more um, more widespread invasion of species like buckthorn. But if that, oh, more open canopy also allows us to better establish native understory species, perhaps there's an opportunity here that we can simultaneously restore native biodiversity and prevent future invasions uh by using these methods in concert with, with these other uh disturbances. The, the trick is getting the native species in before the invasion occurs. Uh, because whoever gets there first is going to have the competitive advantage. But what about darker sites, right? We talked about herbaceous seeding particularly being well-suited for more open sites. Those darker sites still get invaded, right? Buckthorn is very good at dealing with these darker sites because of that fall carbon gain. It can uh invade sites that of many other species can't invade or can't establish in. And so we look at woody species like red elderberry as potentially very good competitors against buckthorn. Uh, maybe better competitors against buckthorn than herbaceous species because they have a lot more in common, right? They're, they're the same, they can be the same size, use a lot of the same strategies. Particularly elderberry holds its leaves late, just like, just like buckthorn does. And so elderberry and evergreens can be effective competitors against a fairly similar species in the form of buckthorn. The thing about them is that we need to plant them at really high densities to be effective. So this is a, a picture of one of our experimental plots where we planted elderberries, um, and sugar maples and balsam firs at like extremely high densities. I'm talking like 24, 25 centimeter densities, uh, which is, you know, totally not a, a thing that you would do, do at a large scale. But um, but gave us a lot of really good information about how these species work. And um, you certainly could, could plant them at, at lower densities than that. Um, but, but yeah, uh, you need to, you need to plant these at very high densities. And um, that's because each plant can only affect a certain area around it. And that's true for the herbaceous species too, but you have way more of them because you're seeding them, you know, in ton, at, at very high rates. Here, because we're planting individuals, we're only going to influence a, you know, a certain area with an individual plant. And um, and so perhaps a better option here, instead of trying to cover your entire forest with things like elderberry is to do cluster planting. And this is something that we're doing in collaboration with Shakopee, Milwaukee and Sioux community um in Minnesota here, uh, where we're, we're looking at exactly how much spacing we can allow between these, these uh shrubs. And also um, how, how maybe like having little clusters of these might have, have uh localized impact that can be complemented with other things like, like seed of herbaceous species or woody, or other woody species. And so there's a potential here to augment woody plantings, right? If we're doing this clustered approach where we're, we're having clusters of woody plants throughout our restoration area, we need to fill in, we, we need more than just that, right? We need to fill in the gaps. And so we can potentially use woody seed, seed of woody species, um, or even grasses to fill in those gaps. The problem with using woody species seed is that it can be very challenging to source that seed. Um, there's much more easily accessible sources of seed for grasses and wildflowers than there are for shrubs and trees. Um, and so while you can get some species easily through nurseries, for example, uh, it's often necessary, depending on the species, to collect those seeds on your own. Um, and while we can't all go out and collect seeds, there are alternatives like seed collection, collection programs. This is something like the Minnesota DNR does, uh, where they uh request people to go out and collect seed. Um, for our experiments, we hired a, hired an individual to go out and, and scout for seed and collect seed and send us bags of seed. Um, that's, those are different ways that you can get communities involved. Um, and that, those can be, those can be volunteer exercises or not, uh, from people all over the, all over your region. Additionally, with some of our experiments, we've tried to establish this woody seed in a high density very rapidly. The biggest obstacle to that for us is herbivory by deer. But we found in some scenarios, some cases, that heavily seeding provides better establishment than, than um bare root planting. And so this is preliminary data. We're still working on this. But basically throwing out a bunch of, of woody plant seed, it all gets browsed, but it gets browsed less than if you had like one big plant sticking out like a sore thumb. So when a deer comes up, it can kind of pick at a bunch of different plants as opposed to walking up to one big juicy plant that just totally decimates. So this is a work in progress. We're still, we're still playing around with this to see how, how well it works. But in several sites where we're doing this type of experiment, we're seeing this kind of cohort effect coming through, having strength in numbers and mitigating or at least spreading out the effects of herbivory in such a way that we actually do establish a nice woody layer that can potentially compete with invasion invaders. Uh, we also can augment woody planting with natural recruitment of woody species. Uh, so plenty of woody species respout just like buckthorn does. And uh, also terminate from seed, just like buckthorn does. And so you can have, um, you can kind of have baseline improvements in cover just by the natural establishment of other forest species. Uh, particularly, in particular, things like black cherry show up pretty regularly in buckthorn invaded sites. And those stems can help compete against buckthorn. Basically provides a, you know, improved baseline from which you can build upon with your planting or seeding activities. And that's great because in some of our experiments, we've looked at, you know, what's the relationship between the total number of native plants and the total number of buckthorn? And it seems like, you know, whether we're talking about plants that we put in the ground ourselves or plants that arose, the biggest thing is that there are native plants there. And the more native plants you have, the less buckthorn you have. And so it doesn't matter if a black cherry pops up on its own or if we planted it there, it will compete against buckthorn just the same. And really our goal is more native species and fewer invasive species. Um, and this is a, this is again, uh, a manuscript that's in, in progress right now, but this is a figure showing that relationship through a, an ordination, or an ordination. You can see that things like buckthorn cover, the number of buckthorn is um, is kind of polar opposite from having the number and diversity of native species. And having those two push systems in opposite directions. So the more native species you have, the more native plants you have, the less buckthorn you have. So we've talked about, you know, what revegetation is, what types of revegetation options we have, and that they are broadly effective. Um, again, the, the key thing here is by re-establishing native plant cover, we can compete against those small buckthorn. But there are no silver bullets. We still need to do follow-up and monitoring. Um, this is another place where community groups can be really effective, uh, having like friends of groups, like friends of the park groups, uh, where people have, you know, uh, monitoring routes that they kind of keep an eye out for large buckthorn. Um, that can be one way that you spot uh resurgence fairly easily. And, and although there will be more buckthorn, there should be fewer and smaller. But then we need to do some sort of subsequent intervention, right? And these, these subsequent interventions, whether that's uh using fire or herbicide or something else, they're generally facilitated by revegetation because that revegetation produces weaker buckthorn. Right? So uh, in the case of, of using herbicides, uh, because we have fewer, fewer buckthorn showing up and they're smaller, they should be more easily treated with herbicides. And the grasses that we're using, things like wildry should be relatively safe from herbicides that are woody specific. Things like triclopiere or garlon should have a lower influence on things like wildry. Um, so they're relatively grass-friendly in that way. Uh, the grasses that we established through seeding also help improve the abundance and connectivity of fine fuel loads in these woodlands that normally wouldn't have fuel loads in them, right? One of the things that we often see in buckthorn invaded areas is that there just isn't a lot of fuel to carry fire. And here we've reintroduced that fuel. So now there's something that we can actually burn and make prescribed burns more effective. That's particularly useful in settings where maybe we're trying to promote oak savanna instead of um, a hardwood forest. And just kind of like the muesification of, of the system has, has resulted in, in that transition away from the oak savanna. So prescribed fire can be a really useful tool, uh, when combined with this type of revegetation as well. So in a nutshell, we're in a buckthorn berry. Um, establishing native species quickly after initial buckthorn management can reduce the amount of buckthorn returning over multiple years. We see that consistently across the board. Seeding grasses, particularly while a wildry, a limous species, and wildflowers in sites that are relatively open can slow the growth of new and existing buckthorn. And planting shrubs like elderberry or sambucus, uh, or trees that have long phenology like evergreens, uh, that can help suppress or eliminate buckthorn as well. If you're curious about, again, the seed mixes that we use, the methods, the species, that sort of thing in more detail, check out our website, coveredup.uamend.edu. And if you want to reach out to me personally, here's my email address. Go ahead. I'm happy to, to chat about anything. And uh, yeah, thanks for, thanks for listening.
Thanks so much, Mike. That was such a great presentation. There's been a ton of discussion in the chat, so um, lots of people agree with me that it was great and very informative. Um, lots of people were asking questions and others were answering them. Um, so I'll try and touch on the ones that weren't addressed here in the chat. Um, one of the first ones here, since we are now in the fall season, can I cut trees at waist-high now and then just continue to strip regrowth next year? Or should I just leave them and cut them in June 2026?
That's a great question and I, I haven't played around with this yet. So as I mentioned, uh, when we were talking about critical period cutting, um, that's still preliminary data. That's, that was an experiment that was um inspired by other commu, and I should have mentioned this at the time. This is uh inspired by a community group that we work with called Friends of Mississippi River. They're a nonprofit here in Minnesota. And um, this is something that they've effectively used in some cases. And, and have been using volunteer groups to, to do this. And, you know, from a, from a plant physiology perspective, I think the sooner you cut it, the better. So might as well cut it now and, and see how it goes. I don't think you're going to be worse off cutting it now than if you were to wait. Uh, but we don't know. We haven't played around with that yet.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Um, somebody here, I think you may have Um somebody here, I think you may have touched on this, but we have a lot of seed loving birds and rodents in the conservation space. I mean, um do you need to protect the seeds that you put down when putting the seeds out on the snow? I know you mentioned that increasing the number of seeds is beneficial, but maybe do you have any other recommendations?
Yeah, so um with herbaceous seed, we haven't had much problem with predation. One of the re, I think part of the reason for that too is because the removal of a shrub layer affects the behavior of seed foraging animals. And so in these areas where we've removed buckthorn, the animals are maybe not as active. And I think there's some work from from John Orick's lab to to support that. But but that's kind of that's kind of a side note. In general, our our observations are that the seeding works despite whatever critters are there. The exception is woody seed, which is less numerous and larger and higher priority forage for certain certain uh animals like squirrels. So I mentioned a an experiment where we put down a bunch of woody seed and how that woody seed growing up in concert kind of has a safety in numbers effect. That safety in numbers is true for the plants relative to things like deer, at least it appears to be so. It is not true for seed predation. We put those seeds out, we had tons of we had tons of hazel and acorns and the squirrels just descended from the trees as soon as we left and ate them all. So we had virtually no establishment of those highly predated seeds, but the ones that they left behind did great. So
Okay, yeah.
It's that's a nuanced answer, I think.
No, that's great to know. Thank you. For seeding of baited grasses and wildflowers, do you have a recommendation for like a kilogram per hectare seeding rate or pounds per acre kind of thing?
Yeah, so the so I I my brain is scheduled is scheduled wired to think in seeds per area. And I do have all those numbers in kilograms per hectare on the website, so I would point the question asker to that because that's gonna be, that's gonna be a better conversion rate than I just come up with on the top of my head. But but the reason why I think in seeds per square foot is because depending on depending on the species, you know, a kilogram is a vastly different number of seeds and a very vastly different number of of plants and therefore vastly different amount of competition that we might offer. And so, yes, we can convert to mass per per area. But I I tend to think in the the seeds, the proper yields per per area. And that's where that's where we had that 600 seeds per per hectare type of thing.
Awesome. Yeah, I put the link to the website in the chat, everybody as well. Um the next question here, if we have very poor soil and the seeding doesn't take, what would you suggest?
Get better soil. Sorry, that's not a helpful answer. I don't, you know, so if you don't have good soil for seed, and this is actually, this is actually something that I'm I'm really curious about. I was trying to figure out seed mixes for those more hostile environments. And I I don't know yet. Um one thing that I think you can do, depending on on the the particular type of pore that you have, right? Is it is it that there's heavy metals there? Is it not drained well? Is it is it drained too well? You know, what is it? Right? This is a really broad category of of conditions. This is someplace where where containerized plants or plugs might be more effective. If if we're just dealing with soils that are hostile toward the towards those early stages of of establishment, then maybe containerized plants are a better option. And we've had really decent success um with with uh sedge plugs. So uh oak sedge or Pennsylvania sedge, carex pennsylvanica, is something that we've used in a similar way that we've used woody species, and it's not as effective as woody species. But if you you plant it, the, you know, sedge does tend to do fairly well um in some diverse environments. So that might be an option. You could also look at you could also look at more mechanical type of options uh to to deal with this. So there's, I mean, there's of course options, uh like we talked about the beginning of the of the talk in terms of different mechanical, chemical, biological means of control. But if you're not really wanting to engage in that and more curious about, you know, a uh revegetation alternative, you could you could manually do things like shade it with a a tarp or something like that too. The mechanism would be the same, but of course you wouldn't have plants, you'd just have a tarp there, so. More cardboard could be good for this too, I would think. I'm 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 riffing a little bit here, but like cardboard might be good and it might help alleviate some of the like if you're using the cardboard to shade out plants, it might also act kind of as a soil amendment too and help maybe improve things if you continue this up long term. That's really spec, that's really speculative, though. Think that's, I think that's maybe more of a a case by case discussion.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, thank you for your insight. Any recommended or suggested species to use on riverbanks subject to seasonal flooding and flows and for swamps?
Yeah, so the so sedges um are gonna be a good option for that. They tend to do well in riparian areas. Other things like uh red dogwood or willows can also be well suited for that application because they they like water. I yeah, I I one species I'm curious about in this context is um like river birch. But I don't, I my my suspicion is that that probably isn't going to compete very well, but it will grow. So, you know, it could help stabilize stabilize some components of that system. But yeah, really, the the data that we have supports supports sedges as an option here. Uh and uh those other those other shrubs are also um something that we we've seen work well.
Okay, good to know. There was a a comment in the chat saying, thanks, thanks for answering my previous question about cutting trees. Now I'm getting my saw ready, so I think people are excited and optimistic for controlling buckthorn.
Oh, good.
Um let me just see if there's any other questions. There's a bunch in here, but I think we answered a lot of them through your talk. Is timing for the critical period cutting similar for most invasive woody species?
Well, in order to answer that, I would have to do this experiment with most other woody species. But so so the answer is, I don't know. But again, if I'm going to speculate here, the the reason why we call it critical period cutting is because it's getting the carbon out of the plant right at the beginning of the season and right at the end of the season. Those are the two areas that are really essential for buckthorn survival. My expectation would be that the physiology of other other understory woody species, so in forests or woodlands, that the similar timing would be equally effective. Unless they're clonal. Right? So for clonal species, this is not, isn't gonna work as well because they they basically share resources through their root systems. So, you know, if if you high top one, one individual, it's just gonna steal carbon from its neighbor. So if it's clonal, it won't work, but I think for most other kind of individual, single stem plants, this would have a a similar efficacy.
Okay, well, I think we'll end it there just because we're on time here. But thank you so much, Mike, for your presentation. It was really great for answering all your questions. We really appreciate you joining us today.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Awesome. And thank you, everybody, for listening in. Fan for our newsletter to see when our next webinars will be. And if you have any other questions for Mike that weren't answered, he does have his email up on the screen here. So thank you all again and hope you have a great rest of your day.